I will call the, uh, to order the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. And at this time, uh, we will have the invocation, uh, by Minister Curtis Green from the Burning Bush Baptist Church, and that will be followed by a pledge of allegiance by Captain Mark Taylor, our police department.
If we could bow our heads, please. Dear Lord, we come to you today, Lord, just giving you thanks, Lord God, and blessing your holy name. Lord, we thank you for just providing for us, Lord God, even through this economy, Lord God, for you are control of the economy. Lord, we come to you now asking your blessings on this city council, Lord God, that you would continue to lead them, to guide them, guide their hands, guide their thoughts, and guide their lives, Lord God, on this city agenda, Lord God. Let their agenda be all about you, Lord God. We ask that you protect their families, Lord God, and bless them as they are without their spouses or family members right now, Lord God, because they're dealing with city business. Lord, we ask this in your, in your darling son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
... United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have some special presentations, and I would like to have, uh, Councilman Mike Rothschild, uh, make the presentation on behalf of the city council.
Always special going through our banner program that, uh, we honor all of our veterans that are out, uh, in the, uh, action area there, all over the world, and, uh, we have our banners posted when they're overseas, and when they come home, we bring them down and give them to the families, we go back, we put the banners right back up. So, uh, tonight, we have two, uh, gentlemen to honor. Uh, first one, Randy Black, his Army, his Army brother, Joe, is also, uh, has a banner posted up now, and his mother, Guadalupe, uh, Black will be accepting. Guadalupe, she?
When he was nine years old, he enrolled in the Lima Lama Hands of Wisdom Self-Defense Class provided by the City of Victorville Parks and Recreation. This activity gave him confidence and assurance in himself. He went on to earn a first-degree black belt. He attended Liberty Elementary School, Hook Junior High School, Victorville, Victor Valley High School, then transferred to Silverado High School when the school opened in 1996. He was a first graduating class of Silverado High School in 1999. He continued his education by attending Victor Valley Junior College and transferred to Cal State San Bernardino and graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree in mathematics. He enlisted in the U.S. Army in 2005. He was assigned to Communications and works with fixing radios and computers and other communicating equipment. He is a specialist in the U.S. Army. He is currently serving in Iraq. This is his second deployment. He is scheduled to receive an honorable discharge in March 2010. My family and I are honored that the City of Victorville recognizes its troops for serving their country. Thank you very much for this, for this plaque.
Robert Swindon, your two-sentence, come up. Uh, graduated '93 from Victor Valley Christian, and he's home on R&amp;R and returning from Iraq for two weeks, and welcome home, sir, and, uh, and we have a very special privilege for putting your banner up and giving you a plaque.
I just want to say thank you to the City of Victorville. Uh, I've lived here most of my life. I love it here. Uh, most of my family's here to see me. I'm very happy to be home, uh, doing my job over there. I love it. I mean, it's Iraq, I mean, what can you say? Um, I just want to say, uh, thank you to the City of Victorville. I have a lot of friends over there. They're from California, too, and they love it here, and I want to live here probably for the rest of my life, so, uh, thank you.
The first item of business on the agendas of all the agencies that were mentioned is what we refer to as the public comment period. Public comment is that opportunity afforded by state law to anyone who wishes to address the city council or in its capacity as the other agencies, which have been identified on any subject that is within the area of responsibility or jurisdiction of the city council. Public comment is not something the council can't prepare for, and the council does not know in, on any given night who is here to speak on public comment or what the subject matter might be. The council does not respond to public comment. If we are going to speak at public comment or on any other agenda item, we ask that you fill out one of the white cards that's available in the foyer that will give the council the contact information necessary so that we may communicate with you if necessary. Uh, schedule your item for discussion on future, to, uh, schedule your item for future discussion. Uh, public comment is limited to three minutes. At this time, we do have some cards here, and they're all on item number one, which is public comment, and we have Yvonne Marshak.
Council members, I'm here again. I want to talk to you, it's a serious problem with the billing for the sanitation and water. I just received another bill. It's $161, and it's from December. There's no way in December I should receive a bill that high with the snow and the rain that we've had. Something is terribly wrong. I mean, there's no excuse for it. We're going into March, and we're getting December bills, and they're this exorbitant. And I'd like you to do something. I'm almost to the point of contacting the, the Public Utility Commission and having an investigation. It's really, really serious, and it's not just me, it's all over the city. Now, I'm one of the people that never got a bill, but I always paid every month, $100 every month, and it's on the record. And to keep getting these exorbitant bills is ridiculous, and I'd like you to do something about it, really. Although I must tell you that Ms. Martin did call me last month, but, and she was very nice, and she said that she was straightening out the problem, but I got another bill. So, please, I'm asking you to do something, and thank you for having the police officer contact me also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Thomas, excuse me, next, we have Thomas, uh, Corbalec.
I'd like to read a notice that's on my business, my ex-business. It's been on there since January. The notice says, notice, "The City of Victorville, in their anti-small business attitude, have refused to let this business of 27 years continue regardless of all rules and regulations being adhered to. There are numerous other small businesses in this city that are suffering the same fate. The city seems to be interested only in big-box business, even though this city was founded on a small-business entrepreneur. Please alert my, any entrepreneur to be very wary of trying to conduct any small business in the City of Victorville. For more information on this ridiculous regulation imposed on small business in the City of Victorville, phone anytime." I'm not here to ask for $200,000. I'm here to ask to get my license renewed. 27 years I was in business, and all of a sudden it goes to Title 18. They want $850,000 worth of improvements on a $500,000 lot. Now, I was annexed into this city, and I spearheaded it. It cost us $35,000. Now, we're annexed into the city. You have put the commercial on the property. I can't rent it residential. I can't get a license, so I can't use it. I can't sell it. I had two buyers. They both come down here. Incidentally, you folks, the other end of this building is what's happening down here that nobody knows what's going on. The man who's going to buy that property called me the next day. He said, "Now, I'm, I know I shouldn't talk to you because I should talk to the broker." I went down to the city. I wouldn't do business in this city if you gave me that lot. You're a bunch of blank, blank fools. Now, this council better visit the other end of the city, and they better go out on Palmdale Road where they put about eight businesses out, small businesses, and it's absolutely ludicrous, the sales. I've been in front of this council before. When that fellow was the mayor, Mr. Caldwell, I bought a man in here to rent that. I had a conditional use permit, he had one. Bradley Art Studios. Mr. Caldwell's comment was, after I said, "Here's his tax, uh, $29,000 in sales tax," which this is a tax city, Mr. Caldwell's reply was, if you can look it up, "We don't handle that." Well, I don't know, the buck stops right here, and I think you folks better visit the other end of the city and stay away from the big-box buildings. This coun, this city was based on small business. That's when we come here, 30 years ago, and it was a proud place to be. Now, you want the big box, you want them like Mervens? What about, why did the sportsman's thing go out? You better research what's going on out there, folks, because that's the real world, and you're not keeping up with it. If you wanted, you can go out there and buy the place and put in a power plant. Thank you.
Chris Eisman. Chris, you, either one, you want to go first?
Go at all. My name is Linda Eisman. My husband, Chris, would like to yield his three minutes to me, if that's possible. In 2006, through Bill Johns of Inland Energy, the city encouraged us to sell them our land. The offer was less than 50% of the market value and included threats of eminent domain, and we declined. When Alcoa Aluminum closed down the plant Chris had worked in for 25 years, we placed the property on the market. Candace Foster of Desert Castle Realty sold the property in November 2007, but the sale was ruined by the city's placement of eminent domain. This was done without our knowledge, and it cost us $400,000. After consulting with Tom Barnett, the hybrid project manager, we knew our acreage was outside the project and tried to list it with Tidwell Realty. We were immediately informed that Victorville had placed code violations against it. Once we received the notice, it was clear that the charges were erroneous, and the pictured property is owned by Victorville. An abandoned mobile home remains parked across the only roadway, totally blocking access to our land. There's also a number of other abandoned vehicles, sheds, trash, et cetera. After many conversations with the head of code enforcement, George Duran, he suggested we offer our 10 acres to the city. As instructed, we contacted the city attorneys Heidi Von Tongan and Roger Reese on May 19th of 2008, and we awaited a response. On June 28th, we received an appraisal made under eminent domain statutes and an offer of $522,000 from the City of Victorville. We faxed the acceptance of this offer to the city's agent, Maria Soza, of Epic Land Solutions on June 30th. Maria assured us that First American Title would complete the escrow in 45 days or less. On July 2nd, we received a notice to appear at a hearing on eminent domain scheduled for July 15th. However, we were called by city attorney Joan Smythe on July 3rd to tell us not to go to the meeting since we had agreed to sell our property to Victorville. Ms. Smythe mailed a letter to that effect. At that meeting, behind closed doors, the city decided to breach this established contract, though the minutes state there were no reportable actions taken. In August, unaware of this decision, we contacted Epic Land Solutions to determine the status of the escrow. Ms. Soza referred us back to the city attorney's office. After many, many unsuccessful attempts to reach any city attorney, we received a call on August 13th from Joan Smythe informing us the city had changed its mind. No other person or company is allowed by law to act so irresponsibly. Feeling that our constitutional rights as American citizens had been violated, we have sought assistance from County Supervisor Metzfeld, Representative Sharon Runner, Congressmen Lewis and Dreyer, Senators Boxer and Feinstein, the State Attorney General's Office, the Governor's Office, the California Bar Association, and other agencies. We have submitted a documented brief to San Bernardino District Attorney James Hackelman, who has presented it to the Office of Public Integrity. The abuse of authority, fraud, and the violation of the Ralph M. Brown Act will likely result in criminal charges against members of this council. Facing financial ruin may force me to either euthanize my 23-year-old stallion or sell him for slaughter. Since I cannot live on the land, it's been changed to commercial, I cannot, cannot sell the land, as you realize, you have it under eminent domain, and I can't even access my property. This dismal prospect and the stress Victorville has caused me has put me under the care of a physician and a psychiatrist. It is not our desire to see this council prosecuted. We would prefer that Victorville repair the damage they have caused us. Just do the ethical and responsible thing and satisfy the contractual obligation the city proposed, and just let us get on with what is left of our lives.
Next, we have Kathleen Coffey.
Good evening, Mayor Cabrealis and distinguished council members. I brought along some pictures with me this evening, and if you would all take a look at them, they'll explain why I'm here. I live on the golf course, and this is my son Sean Coffey, and, um, there, he lives with me. He's blind, and he has cerebral palsy. Um, I live on the golf course, and right in front of my house, you dug up the golf, the, the green, and put in dirt, and now I feel like I'm living right on a dirt lot. It is very unhealthy. When the wind blows, my house is constantly dirty. The wind blows back on the patio. It has different sets of problems at different times of the year. In the summer, you have a workforce out there, and they've come along to clean up, which is called the desert scape. I mean, it's a big dirt lot in front of my home. They come along with rakes, and that's how they clean it. And what happens when they rake it, there's four or five young people out there raking, the dirt flies up again. And I'm here to ask you, I'm pleading with you, if you could put the grass back in, in front of my home, because my son Sean was born premature, and his lungs never fully developed, and he has respiratory problems, and they're getting worse. And I'm just, I'm, actually, I'm begging you, if you could please put the grass back in front of my home. As you can see, it's right, comes right up to my home. It looks like it's, it's just a dirt lot, and it is not very pretty to look at either. And that's what I'm, basically what I'm asking you. And I feel that it also has brought down the value of my home.
Well, thank you, and what we'll do is we'll have our, uh, Facilities Director, Mr. John Gargan, uh, to go out and, and talk to you and see the property, and that's all we can do at this time.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I do hope you give it some serious consideration, because I'm not in a position to move away right now. I just retired, and I retired looking forward to living under, you don't know how long. It took me many years to be able to buy a home on my own for my son and myself, and I wanted to live on the golf course. And the day I moved into my home was the happiest day of my life, and I was very happy there for almost 12 years. I've been in, I've been in, in Victorville 23 years. I've been to my home almost 12 years and enjoyed the golf course immensely, and then last year, lo and behold, they came, and they dug up the golf course, and they came right up to my home, my property. And it's, it's just awful, and I am just terribly unhappy, and I'm, as I said, Mr. Mayor, I'm not in a position to move away right now. And I just retired, and here I am, looking forward to my garden, taking care of my son, and living on my golf course, and that was taken away from me, and I'm not a happy camper anymore, sir. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Very distinguished counsel. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Next, we have Art Figaroa.
Mayor and counsel. I'm here tonight to, um, make you aware of some of the problems, if you're not already aware of, um, in the Brentwood area. Um, I'm sure most of you are aware of the, the break-ins we've been having, the, uh, the loitering in the park, especially in the summertime, the gunfire we've, we've been hearing. Um, I've been in that, I've been in that house since, uh, 1993. Um, these past few years have just been, it's just been really miserable, just, and we're on, all of our neighbors, we're all on edge. Um, the neighbor across the street from me, he's been broken into twice. Um, next door to him, the retired couple, they've been broken into once. Um, I think part of the problem is, um, we, we've actually have witnessed, um, the people behind, they've been broken into, and the street behind us, they, they went through my neighbor's yard and into the street, and they kind of used the, the Paseo that we have there as an escape route. Um, the, there, at the end of all the cul-de-sacs in that area, um, the, the specific part of the, the Paseo I'm talking about runs, uh, off Hook Boulevard, and it runs, um, it kind of lines up with Brentwood Park, and it runs south, and it's kind of, it's a, it's kind of in a hole, and these kids can, can escape into there, and they're, and they're down, and they can't be seen. Um, and we have witnessed them, um, going into, into this area, and they can go up to Spaseo, and they could take any number of, of cul-de-sacs as an escape route, and they can get away. Um, we've actually called the police, they've come, they've actually seen the kids, and they've tried to, to go to the, drive to the end of the cul-de-sac, and the kids, they're just gone. Um, we think what would probably help would be to block these gates, these, these openings in the Paseo, and so to cut down the number of traffic, um, hopefully, I've, I've gone to Home Depot and just looked, and to, just to buy the fencing, it's not an expensive item to do. Um, my, my specific street, we've noticed numerous juveniles coming home. When they come home from school, they kind of walk down the middle of the street, they're, they're just checking out all the houses, and they're just, um, they, they look to see what's vulnerable. My neighbors witnessed them, uh, talking, and the, even over, he lives right next to the Paseo, he can actually overhear them talking, he's, he's actually heard them plotting, um, which houses they're going to hit, um, and we've been real vigilant about it. We've, we've put in lots of money with lighting and fencing and just trying to protect ourselves. My wife doesn't even want to walk the Paseo anymore. Um, I don't know if you accept pictures at this time, I maybe should have given them.
I'm here.
Um, this, these are pictures of the, um, of the Paseo, of all the graffiti, and the, uh, and there was actually a little fire in there, and there's actually some skateboarder graffiti on the ground, maybe from the wax, I don't know what it is, but it's starting to look like a real mess. If you take a look at the pictures, and you'll, you'll see what I mean. I'm real happy to say I, I do report the graffiti a lot, and, and the response has been fantastic. Um, you've come out and, um, and gotten rid of it in, within a day or two, but it keeps coming back. The kids are there. Like I said, the, the Paseo is down in, down into a hole, and it's just, and it's dark at night, and they just, they're just there all the time, it seems like, especially in the summertime, it's a, it's a real problem, like, everybody's on edge. Um, we kind of feel like if, if it was blocked off, if they just couldn't walk through, um, between the, between the residential houses and, and get down in there and use it as an escape route, it might cut down on some things. We just would like you to maybe consider that, and like I said, I went to Home Depot just to, uh, buy some of the fencing, and it's not a big expense for the safety that it would, that would accomplish.
Art, we do have the, our police chief here, and we also have our Community Services Director, uh, who's in charge of the, that's the Paseo around the park. Right, yeah. And, uh, they'll get together with you and give some more information, and hopefully, maybe this, this can be resolved, but, uh, again, it'll be, you know, you can discuss within the specifics and, and see what we can do.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't have any more cards for public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council under public comment? There are none. We'll, um, go into our Library Board of Trustees' agenda. Are there any revisions?
No revisions.
And, uh, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority Agenda, any revisions?
No revisions.
Uh, this will be Councilman Terry Cawthorn, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of any revisions. Item three is a request to approve an amendment to the agreement with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University for the lease of office space at SCLA. Motion would be in order.
They're moved.
Animus items four, five, and six are closed-session items for the reasons set forth on the agenda, and unless there's an add-on item, that would conclude the Airport Authority Agenda.
Chairman Caldwell, there is a request to move closed-session item number five.
Move it. Or now, excuse me.
It's a request to remove.
Then, unless there's opposition, five, closed-session item, property negotiators will be deleted, and that will be the end of the Airport Authority Agenda.
Thank you. Victorville Redevelopment Agency, any revisions?
No revisions.
Victorville Water District Agenda, revisions?
No revisions.
We do have item number three, a request for denial of claims against the Victorville Water District. And we have item number four, which is closed session, and it's, uh, has, uh... And we have Item Number Four, which is Close Session, and it's addressed here on the Agenda. We now go into the City of Victorville City Council. Any revisions?
No revisions.
Item Number Three, a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the SCLA recycle water elevated tank project. We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak for or against the project or the item, please come to the podium. Hearing none, and we're closed to public hearing. entertain a motion. The Consent Calendar is next, and it's items that are considered to be routine and non-controversial, controversial, and they can be adopted with a motion.
For approval?
Councilmember Almond, I need a vote for you.
Written Communications, we have Item Number Five, which is a request to amend the service provider agreement with Parsons, Brickenharte, Quaid, and Douglas Incorporated.
Councilmember McCaffrey, thank you.
Number Six, a request to approve the proposed plan for the use of the one million five hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-five available in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine from Prop. One B, which is the Local Streets and Roads Improvement Congestion Relief and Traffic Safety Account Funds.
Approval?
Number Seven, Item Request to Dump Resolution Number Zero Eight Dash One Thirty-One in Title, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Reminding the Table of Organization Fixing the Rates of Compensation and Establishing French Benefits for Employees of the City of Victorville, and proceeding Resolution Number Zero Eight Dash One Twenty-Nine and subsequent amendments. A motion? Number Eight is request for council to appoint two council members to serve with staff on the Housing and Community Development, HCD, Grant's Review Committee.
A volunteer.
I think the two people that have served the least amount of time on that committee could have their churn in the barrel. Let's see, who would that be? No, it's not me, I just came off.
I thought it was you. Do I have a volunteer, Ryan?
Yes, I'll do it.
Come here.
I was never in the military, so I wasn't told not to volunteer, so I'll volunteer.
We have Councilwoman Ryan McCaffrey and Councilwoman Joanne Almond will sit on the HCD Grant's Review Committee. Thank you for volunteering. We now have council reports, and I'll.
I move. Need a second?
Oh, okay.
Second.
Second in your own motion.
Well, sure, point out.
We have council reports, and I'll start with Councilwoman Terry Caldwell.
I have none.
I have none.
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate some of the public comment we got on this water bill issue. I received a call that came to City Hall from a Mrs. Tyler. The unfortunate thing about this call is that she was referred to me by State Senator George Runner and his office. Apparently, it's gotten to a point where people don't feel that they can come to us directly. They have to go to the, our state legislators, because we can't seem to get this issue fixed. Mr. Cox, I know you've only been on the job for a short period of time, but I would request that this item be put on the agenda at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, so we can discuss and take possible actions to look at ways of solving this problem. Hopefully, you can have a proposal put together by staff, because I'm getting calls on a daily basis regarding this issue now, and it's just gotten to a point where, obviously, those that are currently in charge cannot fix the problem, so maybe we need to look at someone else, getting in there and looking to fix it.
I agree with Ryan. I was gonna bring my last two bills in, but I forgot them. I had a forty-six dollars bill, and the next month I had a four hundred and twenty-dollar credit. So somewhere, something's really haywire. Ronnie's smiling. I think it's a good idea to put it on the agenda.
Okay, and I haven't received too many calls. I've got an email and one call regarding the water bill, but it is, it's a good suggestion to go ahead and put it on the agenda, and let's find out if it's gonna be fixed in two weeks, or we find other ways to get it done.
I haven't gotten a lot of calls, but if we could fix it, it would get my wife off
We now have Close Sessions Items Ten, Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen.
Correct, Mayor Cabrealis. Those, along with the Airport Authority items, are all fully agendized, including the nature of the litigation and the parties involved. And if there's reportable action, we will come out in open session again and report any reportable action that may be taken.
I'm going to close session.
Good night.
Have reportable action from the City Council meeting with respect to Agenda Item on the City Council Agenda Item Eleven. The City Council agreed to settle on property negotiations with the following properties. Okay, we are going to settle with property owners Camp and Julia, Second Family Trust for parcel number zero four six zero one one two zero five for a lateral easement at a purchase price of ninety-four thousand and ninety dollars. Two properties by Desert Wind LLC. The first one is parcel number zero four six eight two six one forty-eight for a purchase price of thirty thousand five seven nine. Second is Desert Wind for parcel zero four six eight two six one forty-nine for a purchase price of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Next is to agree upon a temporary destruction easement with Camp and Julia Second Family Trust at, for parcel zero four six zero one one two zero five for a purchase price of ninety-four thousand and ninety dollars. The other reportable action was with respect to Chicas Property, and the council agreed to settle with the Chicas Property, property owners for parcel number APN three zero nine three one two one zero one for a settlement purchase price of one point six million dollars. That, I believe, is the only. Farm Act is not reportable. Those are the only two reportable actions, and the Airport Authority stuff was reportable. That's it. Meetings adjourned.